Thank you for allowing us that few-minute recess. And we are going to, I'm gonna go ahead and offer a motion. Once I offer the motion and I get it seconded, it'll go up on the public scene there, public screen, documents, whatever we call it. We have everybody? Yes, okay. I recommend that my motion, I make a motion that the Board adopt in order to reopen schools this fall. While protecting the health, safety, and well-being of students and staff, the Prince William County School Board, number one, reopen schools for the 2021 school year on September 8, 2020, under a return-to-learning plan with 100% virtual learning model for the first quarter, which offers in-person services to special education students and other especially vulnerable student groups as feasible, transitioning to a 50% capacity in-person and distance learning model for the second quarter, while maintaining flexibility throughout to adapt to public health guidance as needed. And two, to adopt the proposed return-to-work and health plans modified as needed to adapt to the return-to-learning plan and public health guidelines. She's got a second and then we're gonna get up. I need a second for that motion. Oh, yeah, I need a second for this motion.
Mr. Chairman, I second it.
Ms. Lori Williams, Vice Chair, Woodbridge Districts, seconds the motion. We will now open for discussion. Now, I would ask the Board members, we've all sort of gone through and sort of given our, and me being most guilty of a sort of a long sort of sense of where I am on this. I would ask the Board members to, on this plan, consider just asking questions that will frame your decision on the vote. We have Denise Heebner here in person. We have the other staff members here in person, Al Chiroki, and we have most all of everybody online to answer the questions. And we can direct the questions to Dr. Walts and first, and so as we look at this new motion... So you put the thing up for vote. We're not voting on it. Okay. All right, don't vote yet. We, we, we're, this, we're on, okay, great, okay. So it's up there now. Thank you. So we're gonna have a, please refrain your comments to the questions that will help you decide how you plan on voting on this motion. And there it is. Okay. So I'll start with those folks in the room, 'cause they can see it. Give time for the folks in remote to read that motion since it's up now. Mr. Wilk.
Mr. Chairman, these are just questions right now?
Sure, sure. Questions and statements that sort of go towards your concern?
Yeah, no. When it comes to reopening schools at the, is that a phase? If I'm reading that motion correct, the goal is to go to in-person, a phased approach after the first quarter, provided safety, security, and all that are in place.
Correct. So the way it's written is that students would all be virtual the first quarter, except for those special education students, E.L. learners, vulnerable students that we believe we can service safely at some point in the first quarter. And we build up to, you know, the state's guidelines on who we need to prioritize when it comes to in-person. Everyone will be 100, the rest of the student population at all grade levels will be virtual. And then the goal would be to enter the hybrid model, which is 50% of the students who choose to go to school two days a week, the other 50% go the other two days. The other, and then the students who want to remain virtual can remain virtual all along. They don't have to go in live.
Okay, so you...
Yeah, they'll have a choice.
So looking at the CDC guidelines, what's happening throughout the country, all that stuff, so it's not in, it's not mandated that we go to the 50-50 hybrid model automatically into the second quarter. It's just the overall goal is to potentially to get to that in-person instruction, correct?
So I, I don't know. I mean, we wrote, we wrote the motion to, so I sort of tried to summarize what everyone was saying. So the goal would be to reopen at a 50-50 model in the second quarter. Did I mandate it? I don't know how to, I mean, to...
No, no, it doesn't have to be mandated. I just, the goal itself, I mean...
The goal is to, that we begin the process to try to go in-person at a 50-50 model, hybrid version for the second quarter.
But again, looking at considerations of everything and analyzing basically at that point.
Sure. And the Board, and we'll have Dr. Walts answer this, but can set benchmarks, right, to say, "Dr. Walts, have you reached Benchmark A? Do you believe we're at this point to achieve, you know, our goals?" And so we do it in a thoughtful, methodical way. And as we build up, so if you have special ed students in, or you have other students in, or you have athletes in, therein, we're practicing, not only using, we're practicing, we are getting our system to learn how to reopen in a very slow and appropriate way. And I think we sort of do it that way. But Dr. Walts?
I just wanted to mention, since you're not voting yet, there's some language that Ms. McGowan provided in that original motion that talked about mitigation of the health plan and the, there's a sentence or something in there that we need to make sure gets in this one as well.
Okay.
Basically, what it allows us to do is align the health plan, the return to work, and the return to learning based on any changes that are made. So we don't necessarily have to come back to the Board for that. And that was in the first motion.
Mary, can you just, so what we currently have in this one is the number two, to adopt the proposed return-to-work and health plans modified as needed to adapt to the return. Is that what you wanted? It's in there?
If you'll just check to see if that is what Ms. McGowan...
Yeah, Ms. McGowan...
If that satisfies it.
Yes. Now, I suggest that you might amend it to add three, authorizing the superintendent to implement any additional mitigation measures as are appropriate to accommodate these models.
Okay, so that would be three. So can you send that to B, and B will work on putting that in there as the School Board members continue our discussion.
B has that language from the original motion, but I'll...
So Mary, you and me work on that, and I'll allow the Board members to continue their questions as we go through. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just want to clarify. The other thing is, I mean, based off of kind of what I was saying, and some of my biggest fears, obviously student safety and security, and that of our staff to look at this, the vulnerable special needs populations, and this prioritizes, as, along with the Governor's requirements of prioritizing and putting special needs students in. So we're going to, with this, and put, try to get, with IEP accommodations for those students who are deemed needing this...
Right.
...to put them into school.
Right. And as legal counsel pointed out numerous times in prior meetings, the state has a compelling interest to ensure that certain populations absolutely who, you know, have special needs get the educational delivery that we can offer. And so we have a compelling interest as well, because the state does, to try to deliver education to those we can't deliver virtually. And they have listed categories, that's correct, Dr. Walts, in their 136-page document about who we need to prioritize.
Yes. It would be, it's like special needs students and second language learners, E.L. students. And again, if, I'd have to see the motion when it's done, but that we could phase that in as prioritized. So again, an example that you would use, given the fact that we have about 12,000 IEPs to revise, so for example, that doesn't mean every single one on the eighth. You could have certain students with speech language that are able to do something virtually and others who may not, but you wouldn't necessarily have to bring all of them in. That's part of the IEP process. But we would be, we would start working that phase in on the eighth with what I believe you're suggesting.
Dr. Walts and, go ahead. Mr. Wilk, go ahead.
I'm good. I'll yield to some other.
No, I just, if you can answer the question, and I know many of us have talked to Ms. Heebner, as you've asked us to about these things, but I know Ms. Heebner talked about some of the things we're already doing well virtually, that we're getting better at with some of our special ed populations. And there are some softwares we're actually working on now that are doing things. Can you just address that so we can hear an update on that? Just a quick two-second?
Well, you may remember last year, the Board was very excited because we ended up adding a second person for technology for the special needs students and we, which we only had one person servicing and helping teachers in special ed with technology for the entire district. So by adding another full-time person, we increased it by 100%. So the changes in technology and the devices that we use for students with IEP, certain students respond who may have, you know, different oral, different issues require different kinds of specialized technology. And so we began a much more robust program with that. And so again, we would work to get those devices that we acquired with the people who were helping with the training and try to get that more into people's homes and that sort of thing, just like we have with computers.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Wilk?
Yeah, Ms. Heebner, I could ask a question for Ms. Heebner, student service?
Yes, sure. I mean, yeah.
If that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Good evening, Ms. Heebner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Get comfortable.
Couple of questions about the vulnerable populations and kind of prioritizing and looking at different IEPs from like a special needs level one and a level two. For those students who are currently in like a self-contained classroom, who would, virtual learning would be virtually impossible, virtually, virtually impossible. I mean, would, looking at that approach, I know Dr. Walts was talking about innovative devices and stuff like that for probably students with different accommodations.
Assisted technology.
Thank you. Yes. Where would be, kind of what would we be looking at from your lens in kind of analyzing the kind of the phased in and prioritizing what kids are gonna need more in-person instruction versus ones who might succeed, do well, excuse me, with those assisted learning devices, as Dr. Walts said?
Sure. I'll be, I'll be happy to address that as best I can. I'm coming from the lens of a special educator. I think most of you know that my background is in special education. And we in special education, what we do is we take hurdles and we remove them from children, for children, so that they can learn and make things that seem impossible very possible. And I will say, I'd just like to make a point that our closure was not a planned closure and did not allow us a lot of time to prepare. But even in that time, we made a great effort to get devices into children's hands, the adaptive technology that Dr. Walts spoke to, sending home communication devices. But there's more that we will be doing as we are actually open and providing instruction. We've had a lot of success with virtual instruction. And so teach down is something that came apart, came as a part of our focus on technology. So we do have a lot of accommodations in Canvas and things that have been going very well, virtual, E.S.Y. has occurred, and we're learning a lot from summer school. But there are certain populations that maybe are not able to attend to a screen, cannot interact virtually with a teacher, and they require those social cues and the face-to-face contact with a teacher. And so it would be mostly, you know, a team decision, it will be a team decision with parent input, obviously, and we do need to look at each child individually. But I would say it would be our populations that have significant communication gaps or struggle with language and attention. And it could be very different for different categories. We like to look at different categories or labels, labels or type of classroom, but it will definitely be a decision that is a child by child.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you, Dr. Latif.
Ms. Wall?
I have a question. I don't, can you speak just a little bit more about some of the things that Canvas is capable of allowing us to do for special ed kids? Because some I think will be able to do online virtual learning, and I'm interested in learning or hearing a little bit more about that aspect.
Okay. I will in all honesty admit that I am not the expert on Canvas. I did with my team in the Office of Special Education, have a special session with A.J. and Mr. Gilfoyle and talked, and we had a presentation about what is available on Canvas. There is closed captioning available on Canvas, there is read-aloud available on Canvas. I think the structure of Canvas itself meets the needs of a lot of our special learners, just the organizational piece. What a gift to find it all in one way. I'm gonna apologize to one of my children right up front. I had a child who had no organizational skills. He, and, yeah, there it was, right? He completed his senior year using one folder, and the teacher gave him another folder and said, "Don't you need another folder? Can your parents get your folder?" And she's like, he's like, "No, this is how I know where everything is. It's just in this one folder." So the organization itself of Canvas will really lend to a lot of support for our students who have a lot of focal, focus issue, use and organizational executive functioning and such. I can't speak beyond that, but I know that also, I would just say our instruction has gotten better, our understanding of how we use Canvas and virtual learning. We also have Zoom available now at the division level with a lot more features. So we have the ability to take a class and break them out into a small group setting where we, you know, to be honest with you, we're learning, we're getting good at this. So all the time that we, every time that we do this and every time we have a success, people are sharing that out. We have a lot of teachers that have incorporated really, really unique and creative ways, and I could talk a lot about that. But I do believe that Canvas will help us organize, present material, offer the opportunity for children to access recordings at their convenience, not necessarily, you know, in a live setting, and a lot of flexibility for our special learners. If you'd like more details, I'd have to turn that over to someone else.
We'll just go down the line. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. My concern is that with this, I am in a district where I have one elementary school that all but 30 students are E.L. students. So I think we have to be extremely careful about how we define who we are going to bring in when, because when you just say E.L.L. students, or you say special education students, it's like 12,000 students for special ed and countless more for E.L.L. And I want to be sure that when we put up these definitions, they're clear parameters for our parents and our teachers. Because right now, I can imagine all of our special education teachers freaking out or being happy. You know, there's a lot, that range of emotion that we just sort of tamped down by proposing this motion for 100% virtual may have just like gone back up because we included these groups. And I'm not saying that we should not include these groups. I just want us to be very careful in making these decisions, because special education could mean to one family, a student who has ADHD, and to another family, it could mean their student who physically cannot even use the restroom without assistance. And there's, that's, the gap is very huge. So in, to support this motion, I just need to make sure that we are extremely clear about how we defined who we were ramping up when. Because it almost, we just need to be careful about that, not only for our safety and of our faculty and our staff, but for our ability to house students. And this is an extremely big deal in my district, extremely big deal. So I just want to make sure as a Board that we recognize that we need to be very, very clear on what that means to the public and to these families. Because the last thing that we need is for someone to not get services who absolutely needs services in order to learn in any way, shape, or form, or parents who are petitioning because their child needs small class sizes according to their IEP, and they're like, "But you said we could have special education students in the building." And I have to say that because we're all emotional and maybe, you know, I'm just fearful of the parents who may not be able to hear all the way through this vote, or as we leave tonight, it's like we play the telephone game every time we take a vote. So by the time we reach our houses, someone will have said something that has been mistranslated and miscommunicated, and now we have a bigger problem. So I am happy to, I don't want to use happy, I am in favor of supporting those students who absolutely cannot learn without a physical person assisting them, but I just want to make sure that we are clear on who those, that population is, and we are able to communicate that effectively to our public. Because the last thing I would want to do is deny service to a student who cannot have it without an actual, another human being there in this proposal, if that makes sense. So I don't know how to best do that, if we need to add additional motions, or we need to put up parameters, or maybe the superintendent has some suggestions with that, I'm not sure. But I think we need to be very, very clear about that.
All right. I'll just answer since this is my most, real quick. I think Member Wilk talked about adding another meeting in the summer. I think that's gonna be critical. I think what we ought to do is, I think broadly pass something this evening, and we could make more details in it now, but then have at the next meeting, the superintendent bring back the special education plan or the, you know, we can think about how we want to do that. So as we go through questions, these are things to think about to add to the motion. Ms. Zargarpur?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. This is just gonna go kind of back to one of the reasons why we wanted to start virtually. Some of the special education teachers who emailed me would ask me questions about, they wouldn't necessarily be concerned about going back into the classroom, but when they do, are they gonna have the available PPE, the, a mask and a face shield, or maybe some, maybe some protective gown type of thing? And we're talking about like certain level, that not, not just this is what I wear to work. So that, and I know I passed some of those questions along, but you know what I'm talking about? Yeah. Thank you.
I think, sure. So I am aware of some of the concerns. We've talked a lot about the fact that some of our special needs and our younger children in the situations we deal with, sure, we deal with body fluids. That's, you know, a lot of contact, and there are a lot of different things that we are looking at that. We recognize that there would need to be mitigation strategies in place. You know, Mr. Chiroki and his team have done an outstanding job of really looking at physical barriers, modifications to classrooms. I know that the team in Risk Management and Supply Services are looking at effective PPE, researching what options are. One of the things I remember that you mentioned specifically in one of your questions was about biting. We do have protective sleeves and items for children with biting to protect our teachers that can be worn. There's a different request about modification of clothing that would be allowed to be worn, and also, like I'm hearing you say protective coverings. So we recognize the fact that facials would be needed for certain procedural items. We have catheters or suctioning, different things that nurses, both assistants do. So we recognize that our special educators will need to have proper PPE, and we are prepared, you know, when it's a, when it's a procedure that requires that, we're looking at the OSHA and the OSHA standards that would align with special education, and we would be able to support ourselves with that.
Lisa, I'm gonna have an add-on question, 'cause it's very similar to yours, but I want this clarified, crystal-clear, Dr. Walts, for the entire public in the community to know, and I don't want this to keep coming up tonight. This idea of site-based management and principals buying PPE, I'm gonna ask you a question. Will the teachers and our staff be provided the PPE they need regardless of the cost, when they need it, and where they need it?
So I'll build on the same answer I gave a week ago, and that is, the site-based funding is simply at the site and the materials are at the warehouse. So that actually makes it easier to get what you need, as opposed to schools going out or classrooms or whatever, trying to get the materials that they need. So we've already stocked up on certain items. So when we did the survey, one of the things that the vast majority of, at least on the survey, who responded to the survey, said that they had facial coverings. So if they don't have a facial covering, we will provide it. This more complex kind of thing, you're, let's say a teacher is doing suctioning, then, and they have a face covering. Well, they may need a more sophisticated mask than that, plus a face shield, plus a garb. Those extra kinds of things, we will provide. It's the expectation that when we lay this out for principals, it's not a site-based decision whether or not they provide something as simple as a face covering. If a teacher or a student does not have a face covering, it's provided. We've already set up an account, we've already set, put money in that account. That won't be something that they're making a decision between buying, you know, an assisted technology piece or a face covering.
So that's really important. I want you to say that again. Are principals gonna have to decide between buying a book or PPE?
No.
No. I want everyone to hear Dr. Walts say that. I'm gonna ask it to you one more time.
Sure.
Are principals going to make a decision between PPE and, you know, a desk?
No.
No. So I want it crystal-clear to the public and for everyone to know that this is something that the School Division is committed to supporting. Ms. Jesse, we'll ask you after we go around on this. Oh, Ms. Jesse, you're on mute, but if it's a question on the PPE, please...
I'm trying to get on.
Okay, actually, Ms. Zargarpur is done with her question, so Ms. Jesse, we'll just go to you, and if you have a PPE question, that would be great right now. 'Cause I'd like to get this discussion over.
I'm not gonna go, I'm not getting the same impression, I'm getting the impression that principals are have, are going to have to use their existing budget. So are you saying that you're going to give principals an additional budget to, you have the items in the warehouse, but principals will not have to use their existing monies to buy PPE equipment? Is that what you're saying? 'Cause I've heard the opposite.
If we could get Mr. Wallingford to explain exactly what he has established in the special fund and how that will work, please.
So Mr. Stevens, can you get Mr. Wallingford up?
Principals are aware of this? You can go on to another person while we're waiting for that answer.
Sure. While we're waiting for Mr. Wallingford, why don't we go to Ms. Jackson, if you have a question?
Mr. Wallingford has joined right now.
Oh, okay, you're there, Mr. Wallingford, we can hear you. Go ahead. Dr. Walts has asked you to explain what you've set up for the PPE. Ms. Jesse wants clarification on, does it come out of a site-based principal's budget? And we want reassurances from the staff that we don't want to hear, I mean, I think this is what the Board is saying, we don't want to hear that a principal can't buy PPE because he has to buy textbooks. Can you explain this to us in a quick fashion to reassure us and the public? And if you can't reassure us, then we're gonna have a problem tonight.
So again, Mr. Wallingford, did you hear what I said prior to asking you to come on?
Jason, what happened to him? It's like Jason's up in the sky, you know, it's like...
I'm up in the sky. He is unneeded. Mr. Wallingford, your microphone is unmuted, you should be able to speak.
So my question again, Mr. Wallingford, is, did you hear what I said before asking you to come on the line? If not, I'll repeat it.
I think you're back on, Mr. Wallingford. Can you try to speak? I'm showing his microphone is active and his camera is active, but I don't see him or hear him.
Okay, so while we wait for Mr. Wallingford, I'm gonna have to move on. I'm, you know, Ms... Is it on PPE? Okay, can, let me just go through and then, and let's, it's related. Ms. Jackson, go ahead and ask whatever question you have, we're waiting for Mr. Wallingford to get his technical difficulty sorted out.
Hey, Dr. Latif, are we gonna be able to go back around again?
You'll have multiple rounds. We can round all night.
Okay. Um...
As a doctor, we round late at night, we round in the morning, we do a lot of rounds.
Okay. Because I know that, this is like the first time we're proposing this motion, this says some of my questions about the 50-50 model not working still exists, even if we are focusing on one specific population. And that stems from, you know, overcrowding and understaffed. So I, not knowing, you know, what staff can return, and knowing that like caseloads are huge and teachers would have to set up a classroom and possibly rewrite IEPs, I understand that we're still revisiting the PPE part. When we're talking about PPE, are we including hazmat suits in there and in terms of, and face shields and all of that? Are we lumping that all in under PPE?
Do you want me to repeat the answer?
No, I'm just wanting to know if that's included.
Yes, it's the face coverings that we're asking people who have them to provide them, because we had a large percentage of both parents saying that they already had them or could provide them, and the same with staff. For those who don't have them, they will be given to them, and we will pay for it.
So if they need hazmat suits because they're dealing with many...
Yes, we will pay, for all of the complex materials, like the hazmat suit, if they're doing suctioning or whatever, whatever they need, including the face shields, we would purchase for them. The only thing we're asking them to do is a facial covering. Anything more complex than that, that certain teachers would be required to use on certain students, we will pay for and provide.
Do we have Mr. Wallingford? Jason? Okay, you can keep re-establishing that. We'll go to Ms....
Dr. Latif, I'm not sure what's going on. He's been unmuted. He's been unmuted. I think there might have some kind of a technical issue.
Okay. Maybe he can call in. Yeah, that's fine. You can sort that out. Ms. Ralston? We'll move to Ms. Williams. Oh, Ms. Je, did we do Ms. Je? Yeah, we did Ms. Jesse, right?
Yeah. So, I don't have a PPE question?
Okay. That's fine. We'll come back, Ms. Jesse. We're still waiting for Mr. Wallingford to answer your question.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
I need to know, again, because I can't hound on it enough, from, I guess appropriately from Dr. Walts, when do you need to know, like, we're sending out the parent survey, we're sending out the staff survey, when would you know what that population looked like and how many teachers this would affect? What is the timeline for that? Because when that happens, I would very much like for this board to come back and be able to meet and discuss it again with the public as well, because I don't think we can communicate it enough. But I would like an update. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but what type of timeline do you foresee? And I'm not holding you to a drop-dead date because, again, we're trying to be fluid and flexible. But what does that look like from your perspective as to how we would define that vulnerable population? How many students we're talking about? Where they are and how much staff?
Well, I would like to start by having Rita Goss come on and address what their plan was in the event we went virtual for EL learners, because I think you made an excellent point. And we don't want to lead people to believe that we're going to somehow pull every second language learner in starting on or around September 8th. So, if we could get her to come onto the screen and talk about the plans, because we really need to delineate these things tonight, or we're going to have exactly what you're predicting.
So, good evening, Chairman Latif, Mrs. Williams, School Board members, and Dr. Walts. We do have a plan to serve our EL learners using a variety of resources. You've heard, you've heard a lot about Canvas, but we also will need to use virtual live in-person at different times to support different learners at different levels and provide those mini scaffolds and supports to those students along with their direct instruction on English language learning. In addition, if we were to bring students back in, we, in person, we would want to first consider our newcomers, our immigrant youth, and also our students with interrupted schooling. Those would be the most vulnerable English learners that we have here in our School Division. And that certainly would be our first priority to consider those English learners first, which I believe addresses what Mrs. Williams was talking about.
So, thank you, Ms. Goss. And I think it's very important that we weave, I believe I heard you talk about three categories of students that would be identified. And I think that's important to put that into the motion.
Okay.
Dr. Walts, I...
I have a question.
I believe, I'm sorry, I believe Mr. Wallingford is on if we want to revert back.
I want to divert to him while he's online.
Well, let's finish this line of questioning of Ms. Williams.
So, I am, because I don't know and I am concerned, when you talk about the three categories of English language learner, students, and you talk about our most vulnerable within that population, are we capable of educating the most vulnerable of ELL learners? And I'm not talking dual labeled ELL learners. I'm not saying like, ELL learners who are also fall under special education, most vulnerable, but just simply maybe a general population ELL student, for lack of a better technological label. Can we, or do we have the capabilities to educate them virtually, say, on September 8th? Or must they be in front of someone? Because I don't know.
Well, we do, we do have a plan to educate them, you know, virtually, again, because we've been developing several different models. So, we would be ready to go virtually on September 8th. I think the other caveat to add to those categories of English learners that I talked about, those will be our Level Ones for folks who understand those levels. Our in-person, you know, model would certainly, we would need to base that on, you know, whether it's instructionally appropriate for those students and whether it's feasible. Again, you cited that we have different numbers of English learners at many of our schools. And so, the numbers, we would really need to look at the feasibility of it. But we certainly do have, I think, a strong plan that's been put together by our Office of English Learners Programs and Services. And I know that our L teachers are prepared to execute those virtual plans for students that it's appropriate for.
Okay. So, all right. While Mr. Wallingford's on that, maybe we should...
Mr. Wallingford, you want to answer the PPE question? Let's finish it tonight.
Certainly. Could somebody refresh, refresh the question for me? I was chasing the technology.
Okay. So, what I said, Mr. Wallingford, was that on our survey results, the vast majority of parents and the vast majority of staff said they could provide a face covering. What I explained was that if they don't provide their own face covering, one will be provided to them at no cost. Anything more complex than that, if they have to have some kind of a special gowning, let's say the student requires suctioning and they need a face shield and a gown, that those materials will be provided by us and paid for by us. So, then the question came, do they have to make decisions between, they being principals, do principals have to make decisions between providing a face shield to a teacher that requires it because of a certain special health need? Do they have to make a decision between that and a textbook or that and a desk? And my answer was, no, they do not, and that you have established a special fund for that. And I wanted you to explain how that would work.
Very good, Dr. Walts. Thank you for the help. Dr. Latif, members of the board, if you recall, as we reached the end and got to the end of our budget process in, I guess it was May, at the very end of the process, we had about $500,000 to $600,000 left after balancing out our budget. And that fund, that amount of money was actually reserved in a fund to pay for PPE for those special categories that Dr. Walts is referring to. The short answer is, there should be no principals making a choice between desks or books and PPE. That should not be an issue.
So, Mr. Wallingford, the board will not get an email from a principal that says, "I had to make a decision between PPE and a desk," correct?
Please don't answer that question.
Why? Yes, please. Tell me. I don't, I don't want to hear those emails.
So, the bottom line is, you can't guarantee what somebody may put in an email. But the bottom line is, if that were to come up, all we need to do is let the administration know, the level associate over that school, and we will quickly take care of that. But believe me, we will be explaining that. And by the way, I asked that that fund be set up at way back, I think it was maybe March. It was shortly after all this started. So, we should be in good shape.
Ms. Jesse?
Well, I was a principal, so I know how budgets work. I'm sorry, Diane, but that's what it is. You do what you do and I do what I do. And I know that you have certain categories in your budget that are designated for certain things. So, are you saying that principals have a supplemental budget for PPE equipment and it does not have to be taken out of other existing funds? Because I've heard different points of view. Now, on the survey, I read the survey, 4%, only 4% of the administrators said, yes, they will provide the mask or whatever, but only 4% of the principals actually responded. So, the question is, if I'm a principal, do I have the, a supplemental account to buy PPE equipment? I've got Plexiglas masks and various pieces of equipment that I'm going to need on a daily basis. When visitors come to my office, I've got supplemental money and I don't have to take it out of existing money. Can you say yes or no to that?
But what I can say is, all of the dollars have been allocated out to the schools. We have a central reserve account that we can use for, for those situations where principals need PPE for specific, you know, unique kinds of situations.
Okay. Because in my, in my thousands of emails, I don't know how many, there were counselors and people who meet in certain situation that they feel that they need Plexiglas. So, is there, because I know, I remember that you had a certain amount that you could spend for certain things, and then if you went over that, it was sort of, you're on your own. Is there a certain amount of money given to principals for PPE equipment for their staff? Thanks for mine.
So, let me just say that it depends on what the need is at that school. And also, the materials that they, that they purchase, if it's over and above a face mask, for example, it has to be in line with the CDC guidance and the Virginia Health Department. Like, for example, a principal couldn't just say, "I've decided to buy the Plexiglas bubble shields for every student in the, in our school." No.
I'm not saying that, Dr. Walts. What I'm asking...
The specialized things, yes. And John, you can explain how it works with the budget numbers.
Are they going to get money for specialized things or are they going to get money for the everyday things what's going to kill them? So, do they have, do they have a supplemental budget for PPE equipment? Is there a certain amount given to principals? And I can understand if you say there's a certain amount. If you go over this amount, then you're on your own. You understand what I'm saying, Dr. Latif?
Sorry, Ms. Jesse, I didn't, are you asking me or are you asking Dr. Walts?
I'm just asking you, do you understand what, because you said tonight, it's very important. Do they have a supplemental budget for PPE equipment? And then if they go over that amount, then they're on their own. That's the question.
Mr. Wallingford, could you explain how the budget, how that would work? Because I do not know what budget numbers and how that works. Please explain.
So, in the allocation, we provide funding for materials and supplies. That is part of the shared allocation. Mrs. Jesse, you're aware of that? You've dealt with those budgets years and years and years.
Yeah.
We have, what we have not done is provided a supplemental, additional, above the allocation, above the top, we have not provided that additional funding to any school or department and School Division. What we have done is reserved a central amount, several hundred thousand dollars reserved to provide PPE for those unique kinds of circumstances, like Mrs. Heebner and Dr. Walts mentioned earlier.
So, you know...
There is not, there is not a supplemental amount above and beyond the standard allocation specifically set aside for PPE in each school and departmental budget.
Can we do that?
Well, again, my understanding was the board wanted that centralized, and that's why we centralized it. So, there, so if somebody needs something, you, you'll provide the budget number and they will be able to order it. Am I correct, John?
You're not answering my question. I'm sorry. If I'm a principal, do I have a certain amount of money for PPE equipment? Like, I'm going to buy more mask, not masks, just masks that I'm going to need on a regular basis, and I need Plexiglas and, you know, and are you going to provide that? And it doesn't come out of my budget, but is there a supplemental budget for the health needs? Because that's one of the concerns that teachers have in terms of being safe. Or could you just think about it and bring it back, maybe? Because I don't want to take all the time. It's getting late. Can you just get back with me on it?
Sure. Ms. Williams has a clarifying question as well.
Mr. Wallingford, maybe can you answer it if I reframe it like in this manner? What I am hearing is that each individual school does not have a supplemental budget for PPE equipment. It is a supplemental budget at the division level that the schools will have to submit purchase orders to that pool of money in order to purchase PPE equipment? Is that what I'm hearing correctly?
You're correct. There is, there is a central budget of several hundred thousand dollars could be utilized for PPE.
So, principals will be instructed of this and know that they will not have to take out of their primary budget funds to purchase PPE. Instead, they should submit a purchase order to the central divisions procurement in order to purchase that funds and not utilize their own school budget. Is that sort of how the process should work? Uh-oh, we lost Mr. Wallingford. Is Mr. Wallingford still there? Oh, no, we lost everything. Oh, no. Webinar is not responding. Okay. So, maybe we can table that question. But that's what I think I heard him saying.
Okay. So, let's move on to other questions and...
But we can't if the webinar, because they're not there.
Oh, yeah. So, we've lost our, our people.
We probably timed out the webinar.
Is it midnight?
Yep. No, it's 11:46.
So, it just wasn't a time thing.
If no pumpkin. How can we what?
Oh, dude, my email box.
Yes, Dr. Latif, looks like we have everybody in now still except Ralston, which we're still working on.
I think you need to ask that publicly, Jen. Jen? I think that's important. Let's just do that one publicly and then we'll hand it off. I think that needs to be clarified tonight, one way or the other. Okay. I think we're back up. We have all our board members online.
Diane.
Oh, I thought we had Diane. No? Okay. Well, we'll just continue with questions. We're not going to vote on anything in Ms. Ralston. And recognizing we have technology challenges as part of the current new world, we will wait for Diane and not vote.
And do you let me know when you want me to go back to PPE?
Okay. So, I'm going to have, I'm going to have Ms. Wall ask one last question on PPE, then you finish PPE. And then we're finished with PPE, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Ms. Wall?
Dr. Walts, I am looking at the draft Return to Work Guide for Supervisors, page two. And item 1B, it says, I think we may just need clarification on the language and maybe the language could be clarified to make it more specific, but it says, "Schools and departments will use school-based funds to order from the PWCS warehouse." And I'm assuming school-based funds is really meaning division-based funds or something like that, right?
So, this is a part of the same, this is a part of the same question, correct?
Mm-hmm. Right.
Okay. So, again, what I, what I did was ask for this money to be set aside. We do not, I just called Mr. Wallingford. We do not have every, part of exactly how that works established yet, but we will. What we will do is inform principals and also bookkeepers of what code they can use if it's something beyond the basic face mask supply. I want to, I want to reinstitute that. If they're just ordering boxes of face masks, they can order through their supply budget. But once it gets something more complicated, shields, gowns, dividers for, you know, three kids that for whatever reason they need those Plexiglas dividers, we will explain and train the bookkeepers and the principals what code in the central office they can charge those items to. So, the only thing they have to get out of their supply budget is whatever mask they need. And if that becomes a problem in individual school, I'll take care of it.
Okay. Thank you.
So, excellent. Thank you. Ms. Ralston is back. Ms. Ralston, do you have any questions for us before we lose you again? I don't want to lose you again. We lost everybody online. My apologies. And we're all back now. But Ms. Ralston, do you have any questions for anybody? Okay. Okay, so that's great. I read your lips, and I think we'll move on to, I think, who has a question up that they want to? I saw Ms. Jackson. Do you have a question, Ms. Jackson? Your hand was up.
Well, I still, I'm sorry to go back to the PPE, but if, say, they need a transparent mask, I asked this last session, is that going to be available? Like, because the one special ed job is not the same, they're all going to need different types of masks. So I don't want, like, I don't know what's been ordered, but say, what if they need, you know, a transparent mask so that, like, students with a hearing loss can read their lips, or students with autism can take visual cures? Would that be available?
So what I'm referring to are face coverings, just the cheap, the inexpensive face coverings. If somebody doesn't have that, they order that out of the supply budget. Anything more complicated than that, a mask, a 95 mask, a face shield, any of those things will be covered in the central budget.
Yes, I understand that, but is there going to be a variety of mask choices to be helpful for the variety of different types of special ed positions that we're discussing?
So we will have our work group work on what kinds of things that people will need. So for example, I don't remember if it was you, but somebody asked about language teachers, and I think it was speech, language, yes, speech, language, and world language. And so I mentioned that we're researching the best mask in terms of meeting CDC guidelines. That would be something else that would be purchased centrally. There's face shields, so there's different kinds of materials that we will be ordering, and we'll work with the procurement department and our work groups to make sure we have those available, and they will be paid for centrally.
Okay, I'm going to go back around. Mr. Wilt?
I have a couple of questions for Ms. Heebner again regarding federal guidelines for special education, any waivers, any guidance, any mandates we have to fulfill to better explain, I think, to the public why this group, it's not like we're just randomly picking them other than the governor of Virginia saying we have to focus on them, but I'd like the community to understand federally our obligations to an IEP and what we have to do for these students. Can, that was a lot of me, but would you be kind of willing to talk a little bit more about where we're at with the federal government, why we haven't had, or there are no waivers for letting these go, stuff kind of like that, just to summarize, I guess, as best you can?
Is it on now? All right. So even in times of crisis, natural disaster, we are not waived of our responsibility and our duty to meet our timelines or to meet the needs of our special education students or special learners under IDEA. And so it does create a situation where we are obligated to, even in the most difficult times, meet our deadlines, meet instructional needs of the students, and provide FAP. And that is one of the focuses. We have not received a lot of explanation yet on how that's reflected in IEPs during the closure, but any decisions that we make, if we shift from one model to the next, will require us looking at student by student individually, how we can provide those services.
Ms. Williams.
So I have another, I know, we're beating a dead horse here with PPE. But, so I just need to know, because I'm getting questions, and I want to make sure that we're clear so that everybody understands. If something is not currently stocked in the warehouse and it is needed in order for someone to perform their job, that is something that the central office will purchase and schools can order? Is there, do we know when varieties of PPE will be available, or do we already have varieties of PPE in the warehouse? Maybe that's a facilities type question.
I can't speak to what's available now, but I can tell you that we have a health task force. Would you like to speak to that?
Oh, maybe it is. Ms. Heebner, question.
And so, for example, if I'm not mistaken, both Ms. Polk and Ms. Bellamy, are they both on that?
So we have several different processes that have been in place. At the start of the pandemic, we looked to determine what we would need. I know that Mr. Wallingford and Supply Services and Mr. Shiroki have been working to make sure that we place orders proactively, anticipating that there might be shortages and needs. Teresa Polk and Gina Bellamy have worked with Supply Services and Becca Slater, our amazing director of Student Services, and identified what we believe the needs for the nurses would be, and placed an initial order to have those in stock and on hand in the warehouse. So for example, like the face shields that Dr. Waltz is speaking to, we recognize that we may have procedures where those are needed, and those are in stock waiting, but those are reserved for the medical needs that we have, not just widespread ordering. So we do have a task force that is looking at the needs of each individual job or role or duty, and that is in collaboration with the Office of Special Education and the Health Services, and I can point to Risk Management, Mr. Crowe is back there, who's leading the effort under Mr. Wallingford. So we have a lot going on, there are a lot of different aspects of PPE. I think it's really important to remember when we're talking about face coverings, and it's not necessarily a mask. You know, we're saying face coverings because most people have a preference. If you look around the room, everyone has something different on. And so when you come to school, if you need a face covering, you can make that out of a T-shirt, you can make that, you know, out of a bandana. There are a lot of different options for that. I think when we're talking about PPE, there are a lot of different categories that we need to really think about, and we've tried to break that down. Is it a building? Is it a Plexiglas? And that's a different level of PPE. So I think that the Health Committee has identified what the critical things are that we need to mitigate in situations. There will be some things that will be the responsibility of the school, but the major purchases that need to be put in place, we have this reserve, and Mr. Wallingford is looking at that. And that's in collaboration based on need, not on want, but actual need to mitigate health situations.
So I can understand that, but I guess the question that keeps coming up is really not about face coverings, but different types of face masks, face shields, Plexiglas, if that is available in the warehouse, if an individual principal can order that for their school. Because I get, I don't think the question of face coverings is in there at all. That's okay, because that's important to clarify. But I guess what I'm, not I guess, what I'm getting asked is, do principals have the alternative to order different types of masks? Like, if currently we only have in stock these blue masks, are we in the process of ordering face shields, not just for our nurses, but for teachers who have to interact with students who may spit, or may, whatever the case may be? Or teachers themselves, when they do return to the building, maybe they are not CDC-defined high-risk, but they are high-risk, will they be able to get a face shield? Will we have those things in stock? Not just, you know, and if our administrators, like, say you walk into the office, so maybe the receptionist has Plexiglas above her desk, but will administrators at their desk, when students come in the office, are they going to be able to, is that deemed a necessary item for them to have at their desk at what, you know, when we have students in the building? Will they be able to order those kinds of things?
So, well, go ahead.
I see the Supplies Services, I was going to defer to Dr. Waltz or Mr. Wallingford, because that, some of the questions you're asking, there's a lot of different questions in there, and I can answer some of those, but I prefer that Dr. Waltz address that, and I can address.
That's what I was saying, maybe it was a facility thing, I wasn't sure.
It's a little bit of everybody.
I know you're ahead of pandemic.
It's a little bit of everybody. I can tell you that from a special education standpoint, Dr. Roper is working with, you know, under Mr. Wallingford and Mr. Crowe, to determine what the needs would be, and some of those will be our students that have issues.
So if I could jump in, Denise. The task force that Mrs. Heebner refers to, it started working recently, and we have to follow regulations set by OSHA and the Department of Labor and Industry in the state of Virginia, a group referred to as DOLI. DOLI has not produced their regulations yet. Those regulations are still in flux, they're in draft form. There was a phone call about a week ago. That's what Mr. Crowe and that team is working on right now. It's our intention to provide PPE based on categories of risk set by DOLI. So for example, my wife is a kindergarten teacher at Ashland. We will not be providing her with a plastic face shield, a paper gown, dust boots, hairnet, or any of those kinds of things. In fact, my wife will probably bring her own mask to work because she'll prefer to have her own. And if she happens to come to work one day and doesn't have her mask, then the school will provide her with one that they can get through the warehouse.
Face covering, face covering, face covering.
Excuse me, face covering, excuse me. Each one of those categories of risk potentially can have a different kind of PPE that is supplied. That is something that we're working on right now and will be available in the warehouse.
So thank you, Mr. Wallingford, because I think that's important, because I think their staff and, you know, probably parents are wondering, like, what are we able to provide to staff? And what I hear you saying is that we are still waiting ourselves as a school division for further clarification for the state on what the state deems is appropriate according to OSHA, and I forget what OSHA stands for now, but I love them. And if you could, like, explain the acronyms for our parents listening at home, because I think that's really important, and it makes a difference between staff freaking out now and saying, oh, well, we think the warehouse is only full of blue masks, and that's all we're going to be able to have available until September 8th. And what I hear you saying is, we don't know, because the state has not defined what is considered a safety equipment and what is not considered a safety equipment, for us to be able to go out and purchase and stock those for needs. Is that more of what I hear you saying, Mr. Wallingford?
Yes, ma'am. Department of Labor and Industry is DOLI, OSHA is Occupational Safety and Health Administration. They're the federal group.
And DOLI is?
I'm sorry, DOLI is the Department of Labor and Industry. That's a state group who sets regulations that we have to follow. So those two groups, OSHA standards exist, DOLI standards are in process, and Mr. Crowe and his team are working on determining what PPE will go with each one of those risk categories.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about the, I'm sorry, it's PPE.
Yes.
Did I hear Ms. Heebner say that some people wear T-shirts and some people will wear bandanas? Is that, are there certain guidelines for face masks? Will people, the students providing their own face masks, be able to use masks that are not really approved types of masks?
Mr. Chairman, could I respond to that?
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. McGowan.
Yes, I sent a memo late this afternoon, and I'm sure Mr. Wallingford hasn't had a chance to see it, because it was right before the board meeting. The Virginia Department of Labor met today and approved the final regulations. Those are standards, they're requirements, as opposed to CDC guidance and recommendations. We expect to have the final version by, I think it's July 27th. We have a pretty good idea of what it's going to cover, but we can't be sure until we have the final regulations. But they're going to drive the answers to all of these questions.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan, I've not seen that yet. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And so I'll wrap up the PPE discussion once and for all by saying, Dr. Waltz, Mr. Wallingford, I think the board has made themselves very clear that they want to make sure, from what I hear from them, that no principal, no school doesn't have the money to buy the PPE they need. We're not deciding between textbooks and PPE. We're going to get it to them, we're going to deliver it to them. I don't, this pandemic has exposed weaknesses in every system, and, you know, whether it's site-based management is a problem, or whatever you guys do, I just want to know, and the public wants to know, you will get them what they need, and that's it.
Correct.
Correct, that's it, we're moving on. Okay. Okay. I think Ms. Wall has an instruction question, because that's what we do.
All right, thank you. I had a question about the modules that we're building out in Canvas. I know we have 700 courses. If we go to virtual schoolhouse, I know we're working hard on building all those out, but where are we? I was wondering if somebody could speak to kind of where we are in building modules? What process are we engaging in to be able to get ready to do, you know, do you have content? Sorry, oh, am I not loud enough? And what are we, could we get an update on what's going on with that, I suppose?
Ms. Goss.
You're mute.
Ms. Goss, have you unmuted your microphone?
Sorry, thank you. So the work on our course content is ongoing. I believe I shared previously that we've hired 161 teachers off contract to support that work this summer that is occurring with our PD specialists and our content supervisors helping to oversee that. We have almost, just a little over 7,000 modules that we'll be working to develop, and we are starting first, at least with those 161 teachers around our English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, Social Studies, and World Language courses. And then we're also building out some other modules for the other core content, the other co-curricular content, our CTE courses, and in all of our areas, music, PE, all of those. In addition, we're partnering with our Office of Special Education and our Office of English Learner Programs and Services to make sure that we are putting in those structured support scaffolds for students with disabilities, as well as our English language learners, as well as enrichment pieces for advanced coursework and our gifted students.
Dr. Latif, may I?
Yes, Ms. Jesse. Then we'll go back to Ms. Wall. Ms. Jesse?
Okay, thank you. Question, I have a question that just came to me, and that question is, will special education students receive a full day? Are they going to be on the 50/50 plan? Or, and the other question is, if, how many kids are we talking about? How many teachers? And in some of those schools, I think Ms. Williams brought that concern, it's almost going to be like, they're going to be full-time teachers again. So can you, can someone address that? Or have we thought that out, or something we need to think about down the road? I'm okay if we don't have the answer.
Well, again, the propos.
Yes, yes.
Again, this is a brand-new proposal, so we haven't heard any of this till right this, you know, right tonight here, a few minutes ago.
Well, I think to clarify, she's, so regardless of when the 50/50 model starts, whether it starts September 8th or the second quarter, she's asking, her question is, do we do this? Her question is on the 50/50 model, when people start coming in. So she asked, well, in schools that might have a lot of EL learners, will that school be more overcrowded? And have we given it that thought?
Well, it would be our, it would be our intention, you ask about the school day, for them to be full-time, all day.
Right, for the full-time all day, starting second quarter, that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about in the new part of the program.
Yes.
Right. So Ms. Jesse, what Dr. Waltz is saying is that in the 50/50 plan, when they do start going in, if you remember the 50/50 plan, special ed was going to go four days, remember? Some of the vulnerable populations.
My question is that, aren't we talking about bringing them in earlier?
Okay, so that's different than the 50/50 plan. Yeah.
I'm understanding that we're going to bring special ed kids in because they have IEPs.
So the answer to that will be, it depends upon the IEP process?
I know that, but I'm concerned about the vulnerable, who are those kids, and how many teachers are now going to be required to come, and when will that happen, and what that day is going to look like?
We wouldn't have that information tonight.
Okay. But I think that that's going to be a big question, a big concern. Especially special ed, I'm not, I think people understand, special ed is a law, but the vulnerable population, who they're going to be, what is it going to look like, how many teachers are going to be required? That's the question that we have. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Wall?
Yes, I had another question regarding the virtual model. So one of the reasons why some parents are nervous about the virtual schoolhouse is just that they don't feel adequate to support their children, especially maybe the younger children. High school is less so, because they're usually better at technology than their parents. But could somebody speak to? But, um, could we, could somebody speak to, um, what kinds of supports we are planning, um, on implementing for parents and students as we get ready for virtual, a virtual start? Um, so I'm thinking like videos or, um, you know, training modules for parents and students, um, probably more for parents. But also, um, things maybe like a, a technology hotline or something where, or, or even a list of school-based support people. So if there is a problem, you know, getting on a class or something like that, that, um, a parent can access a live person to help them figure out where to click or what to do, um, as we roll out a, a virtual start. Because I anticipate we're going to have some anxiety from parents and possibly children as we move into this territory.
I can give you the short answer to that. So yes, those things are either in development or have been developed or will be developed. So there will be things, there will be, uh, opportunities for parents to learn how to support their students. Uh, there will be, uh, people that they can call if they need help, just like we have a helpline for staff. Um, and certainly there's a robust training for teachers. And some of that's even going on now.
Okay, this is for Dr. Walz and maybe Rita Goss. I think we talked about this last week in the work session. Folks have brought it up. The distance learning plan as put in the, in the plans that we were off, offered and we talked about in the work session showed live sessions on Monday and nothing live after that. I want to know, because if we're going to do, we are doing, I think we're going to vote on it, but that everybody goes virtual in the fall. I, I want to know what, so why does it have to be so complex? And, and I know you're going to say there's, there's a lot of reasons for that. But why can't everybody, for example, and let's use two ninth graders who have the same exact schedule with the same exact teachers, and one student chooses, and so this would be when we go to the 50 model or prior to it. So they're both virtual the first quarter, right? Taking the same classes, same teachers. When we go to the second quarter and student A decides they would like to go in live, and they're going to go two days a week. Why can't the schedule be the same on that live day with maybe a different instructor? Because what you're proposing and what I'm seeing, and which makes me really uncomfortable, is that we don't have a long-distance plan that has enough synchronicity or live learning. And, and that has me on edge.
Ms. Goss, we'll start with you and then, uh, we may need Mr. Guilfoyle as well.
Uh, so, uh, Dr. Latif, if I'm understanding your question correctly, you are specifically referring to the, if we are in a 50/50 in-person, um, distance model with some students-
Correct, correct, Ms. Goss. So I, 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 and we went over this the other week. So rather than regurgitating some of the stuff is, I, I continue to sort of not understand why we have a distance learning plan and we have a virtual schoolhouse. What I would recommend, whether you do it or not or think about it, that if we're going to do virtual for the first quarter and we have a virtual schoolhouse and we're going to be doing live learning and engaging students every day, I think on the virtual model somehow, when we go to the second quarter, I do not, I, I, I personally cannot support anything that looks different than that for the live version kids, I mean, what, students. We cannot have a distance learning program that is live on one day and then abandons them for the rest of the week. And so I need to know what you guys are planning and why it can't be as simple as everybody in the first quarter on the same schedule. Those kids going live, take that schedule in school with maybe a different teacher. And the other one, everyone else is virtual, right? So, um, and, and so why are we complicating it?
So, Dr. Latif, uh, we are not complicating it. Um, I think we're trying to outline what we have, um, have staffing for. So speaking about the distance-only students, um, our goal is to try to match up when we get that, um, employee information, um, distance-only students with virtual-only teachers in a creative way that would allow those teachers to support those distance-only students for more than just that one day. The previous schedule that you saw that only had the one day articulated for that live virtual teaching was assuming, because we don't have that information yet, that all of our teachers would be returning in person. Um, so, uh, you know, the virtual schoolhouse that you reference is when we're all on virtual, uh, we certainly can, um, do things differently than when we are, um, we have the, our teachers teaching in person and we have students who are distance-only. Uh, we're going to do everything possible to give the distance-only students as much, uh, FaceTime, uh, if you will, virtual FaceTime with a teacher, um, as possible. And we are looking at different ways to creatively assign virtual teachers to be co-teachers with, um, teachers of record in schools that allow us to toggle between, if you will, that virtual schoolhouse and a 50/50, um, in-person model. Uh, so, um, it, as soon as we get that information, we can certainly look more creatively. Um, while I know it is not the answer everyone wants to hear, uh, we simply do not have the personnel, um, to run a parallel school system with, um, a full complement of teachers, if you will, for all of our courses, um, virtually, at the same time we're running a full complement of courses with teachers in person.
Thank you, that's, that's, um, clarifying. I appreciate that, thank you very much, Ms. Goss. Yeah, Ms. Zargarpur.
So, hi, Ms. Goss, I'm like, you're over there, okay. Um, when we were doing our meeting with our students, um, many of them, from elementary to middle to high, really appreciated any kind of office hours or face-to-face time virtually. They, they really loved it. And, um, I also talked to some kids who felt like it would be really important, this is, I'm going to go on a mini tangent here, but it has to do with this too, to connect with their guidance counselors, their counselor, not a counselor, their counselor, um, in a virtual space. I had a guidance counselor explain that it would be easy enough to just, um, just like in school, you have your waiting room and one kid comes in the office and then they go. They can do that virtually, they can have, uh, kids waiting in the, in this, in the waiting room and then, um, go, you know, meet with the kid and then go. So both kids are saying that this would be really valuable. And the counselors were saying, we just need to make this really easy for them to, to get to. I know we had like a, an email that our kids could, could go through, but they weren't guaranteed to be matched up with a counselor they liked. Which brings me to another, uh, topic since, since we're going to start virtually to make sure everything is safe when we get back into our school. And let's be clear, we are, we're doing this to make sure everything is safe. We're, we're not, all of this has to do with making sure that we can accommodate all of our students. We're an overcrowded school system that's been chronically underfunded. And we can't just put kids back in a building and say, well, here's some wipes and hope you get the doorknob and, oh, oops, now it's time to change class. We have to be really thoughtful about how we're, we're re-entering into school anyway. So when we're in this virtual time, I'm thinking about wraparound services. Our nurses may need to consult with some of our students, our, our, you know, mental health teams, whatever else there may be, to make sure that's accessible to our students. And I think it can actually serve as a model for, um, you know, if we have to be all online because COVID numbers go back up and we have no choice, then, then it's already in place. But I think this would be a really good opportunity to, I just wanted to tangent that because I, I, it's all stuck in my head. So that's all I have to say, from just interviewing students and listening to how they talk, they value that face-to-face time, they value talking to the people they already know. And if we can create our own little virtual wraparound services, that would be a really interesting model moving forward, thank you.
So, uh, we'll go to Ms. Wall and then I think we need to work on the language of the motion and clarify groups that we're going to bring in early, what we want to put in this motion. We need to finish this tonight or this morning.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had another question about, um, I guess it's kind of a clarifying question. It has to do with a virtual schoolhouse, which is what we're going to start out with most likely. Um, so my understanding is that teachers will be able to conduct live lessons with our classes every day as we start out. And that those sessions will be recorded so that students can watch them later or if they couldn't meet the live session, they can watch it later. Um, and the reason, I, I just want clarification to make sure that is indeed the plan and possible because I'm, I want to, um, advocate for the parents who maybe in this situation, you know, they're both working and, and the child has like teachers that are trying to do virtual schoolhouse during the day, but the parents aren't there to support the child with that during the day. But maybe the parent comes off of shift work at 4:00 PM and then they can go back and do, you know, three hours of school support with that child in the evening. Um, so is that, is that correct? That, um, there was that capability or that expectation that teachers would be able to record their live lessons so that they could be retrieved later in the evening or, you know, because virtual schoolhouse, virtual school is going to put, um, some pressure on our families that, you know, they're both working or they have childcare arrangements, but the childcare provider can't really be the teacher's aide. See what I'm saying?
Yes, so these lessons are going to be created, but I want to make sure that that's separate and apart from thinking that every teacher's lesson is going to be taped and available. That, that will not be happening.
Right.
But there are large numbers of teachers that Ms. Goss referred to that we have on special contract who are developing these lessons that yes, will also be available at all different hours, which is one of the things that virtual learning is a big asset is because of the flexibility and availability.
Okay, great, thank you. So as I understand it, then the virtual schoolhouse will allow for flexibility for parents, working, working parents, et cetera. But also will have live instruction.
Ms. Goss, is there, is there anything you need to do to clarify my answer?
Uh, not really, Dr. Walz. Uh, you know, I would just add by saying that, um, in addition to what Dr. Walz says, we also have a partnership, um, with Virtual Virginia and all of their content will, um, be, uh, being imported, um, into our Canvas system. And so that's going to just further, um, really assist us with having that, uh, recorded and uploaded content to support parents who may have to, um, like you said, flex, um, have some flexibility and when their students access the learning, if they cannot attend the live, um, virtual, uh, interaction with their teacher.
All right, thank you very much.
Bee, um, there was some new language being worked on. Um, can you put it up on the screen so we can go through it line by line and make sure the board is comfortable with whatever we decide? Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, while Bee is doing that. I think, um, one of the things that is important and vital to students and probably to parents too, like normally when you go in a class, depending on what grade level you're at, like elementary school, you get a class list or kids are able to like, um, exchange information with their peers on their class. Um, will teachers be able to, it's probably more of a Ms. Goss question or maybe a Ms. Heuner question, um, will students be able to still do that in a virtual setting? Like, understand that they, and I'm just using this as an example, they're assigned to a specific class, there's X number of students in that class. Will they be able to have time in that class to say, um, hey, you know, to chit-chat with each other to really be able to exchange that sort of information? And I, I think it also sort of meets their social, um, component too because the last thing I would hate is like you only log in, you don't get to dialogue with your classmates. Or, um, be able to exchange information because I think one of the things that we often forget as adults is that kids sort of form their own support groups. Like they do their Snapchat rooms, which trust me, the first time I heard about that, I was like, wait, why are you on the phone? You're supposed to be doing your homework. And he's like, I am! And I'm like, what, it's Snapchat? And he's like, nah, but my whole, like tutoring class is in here. We formed a group and we're helping each other. So I think it, you know, overall, ki- mo- most kids are, are much more adept, of course, depending on age and their needs, uh, to utilizing, um, social platforms in order to, to help supplement that support. I just want to make sure that they're going to be able to, at as best as possible, communicate with their peers in that classroom and have a little bit of space to do that. Is that something that's possible as well when they're doing live instruction? I don't know who that would best go to, if that's a Ms. Goss question or a Ms. Heuner question or maybe Dr. Walz, I don't know.
I'll let you take that, Ms. Goss.
Uh, sure, uh, Mrs. Williams, uh, in Canvas, uh, we have something called discussion boards that our students can, um, interact with each other on those discussion boards and also with their teacher. Additionally, I, I believe you may have heard before, uh, Mr. Guilfoyle, um, say about our division license, um, for Zoom. And so we would, you know, continue to use that license to have that live interaction. You know, what I would say in, in getting into, uh, some of our Zoom sessions where I saw teachers interacting with, with students, that those, uh, our teachers understand the need for our students to, um, socialize, if you will, uh, in a virtual setting. And, and our, our teachers already understand the need to, um, have those kinds of structures like class meetings and, and other pieces in order to support students, um, socially and emotionally, even while they're in a virtual learning session.
Thank you, Ms. Goss, I just want to make sure that, um, I know it's late, but someone will watch this and there's probably someone live typing or tweeting or chatting this as we are going on. So I just want to make sure that, um, our parents know that, and our students more importantly, know that they, that that social need will be met as much as possible on a virtual platform. Um, because I think that's really important for them.
That's certainly our goal.
Thank you. While our chair is occupied, do we have any, Ms. Wall?
I've got a lot of questions tonight, I guess. I'm running out, though. Um, I was wondering about, um, Governor's School, um, in particular, and maybe even Independence Non-Traditional. If we start as a virtual, 100% virtual, um, what about Governor's School kids? Because I believe they are, they start out, I, they start out at their base school usually and then they take the rest of their classes at Governor's School. So I'm assuming they would follow the guidelines of whatever Governor's School is doing? Is that correct? And then non-tradis-, I don't, I don't really know about how Independence Non-Traditional would be affected, but I'm assuming that there might have to be a slight modification for how they do virtual.
Well, I, I'm not the expert, but I know they have a virtual, uh, online component.
Already, right.
Already at the, at, um, Independence, but at, Ms. Goss or Ms. Heuner? And I, and I do believe for Governor's School, we have to follow Mason's guidelines as well, too? I, I don't know. Ms. Goss?
All right, thank you.
So, uh, Mrs. Wall, um, the Governor's School, uh, you're correct. You know, we, um, that is a partnership between us and George Mason University. And, uh, we don't have, um, all the final information about how George Mason is going to operate, um, their classes, uh, this fall. Uh, but what I can tell you is that, uh, my colleague, Mr. Shiroki and I, as well as the director of the Governor's School, are looking at a number of ways that we can ensure that our students, um, continue to get, um, all of the, um, instruction and learning at the Governor's School that they need. Uh, I, I would also, um, offer that, you know, that, that's a unique program and so we're going to, um, have to look at, uh, unique, um, solutions for those students to ensure that they continue, um, to be able to participate in that learning. So as soon as we have that, um, final plan from George Mason, uh, we'll be all working collaboratively, um, to ensure that those students, um, are well-served. Uh, as far as Independence Non-Traditional School, um, they have a, a number of, uh, ways that they already, um, individualize the learning programs for their students there and, uh, utilize, um, virtual learning. Uh, they, they've been using, um, virtual learning as a part of that program there to serve students. And so, uh, they, they're well-prepared, um, to continue serving their population utilizing, uh, virtual learning for those students, um, and utilizing their staff. And the students, um, who are students with disabilities would be at, Independence Non-Traditional School would be- would be at Independence Non-Traditional School would be handled like all students with disabilities, based on the IEP team process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anybody from home? Okay. I think we're trying to sort out, and let's just take a five-minute break, because everyone needs a break to use the restroom here, I know. And we're going to finalize the language that we'll put up in the final motion, and discuss that final language on who we want to, on how it works. So we're working on that language with Division Council, and we're going to get it up on the screen here shortly. Let's take a five-minute recess. So can I ask everyone to return to their seats, and then we'll wrap up with a final set of questions? Jason, can you get Ms., yeah, Ms. Jackson, Diane, and Ms. Jessie are back on? We're going to have some questions here for, from Ms. Jackson, has a final set of questions for, we'll just go ahead and address them to Dr. Walz, he'll try to answer them. We have, some of the staff is working on some of the, just sort of final things, Ms. Jackson. But go ahead, and you're up.
Well, I think I was waiting to see if my questions are applicable with the new motion, because my questions kind of stem that the special ed classrooms are still overcrowded, and I don't know how many teachers can come back, and, and just like, making sure that all service providers, and teachers, and parents are all part of the discussion. This is just, I bet it all kind of relates to where the motion is.
Yes, they definitely would have to be, Ms. Jackson. So that would be part of that IEP process. And that's why we would phase bringing them in. We wouldn't just bring any student in, and they would be the ones that would be the most in need utilizing the IEP process.
Yes, I understand the IEP process. I was just thinking, like, in terms of, like, the plans moving forward, perhaps that we could have a task force of parents, and teachers, and service-related providers, to ensure that all people provide their input. It is my suggestion. I'm just putting it out there, but I have yet to see the...
Oh, okay. I'll make sure Denise is aware. Thank you. Ms. Hevner, thanks.
My questions are related to input during this period of time, where so many people felt that they didn't have input. I'm wondering if, Dr. Walz, if we could get some of these bus drivers and cafeteria people to get some input and concerns from them directly. Do you think you guys could do that, since we have some time now?
I would have to ask Mr. Shiroki what is in place now, and what he plans.
Well, I didn't see any, I didn't see any, I think, and I hate to use the word Fairfax City, but Supportive Advisory Council, I'm sure, I know that the Director of Transportation was involved, but when I looked at the committees, I didn't see any actual employees. And I'd like to see, these are the people on the front line, these are the people who, if anybody's going to get the virus, they're going to be the people getting the virus. And with this being a situation of medical, a health issue, I'd like for him to get more people, get some input from these bus drivers, and I know that you've got all these things in place. I just need to know that they have a voice.
Sure. So the Support Advisory Council is an excellent one to bring up, but I'll let him speak to that.
Is he, is he there?
Yeah, Ms. Jessie?
Hey.
Hi, how are you?
Hey, you're one of my favorite people, if you have my favorite answer.
On behalf of Support Services, as a whole, we would be happy to work with Ms. Goss and the Return to Learning Group, to provide input, if that would be the most appropriate way. And if we need to have separate groups, just to give feedback individually, we would be open to that as well. We did have our Directors from Support Services that were part of that, and they were advocating for our employees, but knowing that if we get clear direction this evening, we would want to include some specific drivers, cafeteria workers, facility services folks as well. We'd be happy to do that.
Because, you know, that evening custodian, trying to sanitize that entire building, I guess, is a problem. And I guess the other question I have to Mr. Walz, since there is some money, there's 17 million or whatever, can we use that, some of that money to provide the support that people are requesting? Can we, are we looking at providing additional support personnel for teachers? I know after September 30th, we have a clear sense of what the budget is, but there's just no way, these teachers are in the second phase, when we go to, well, the second nine weeks, I'm sorry, I'm beginning to lose it, you're getting late. But when we move to that second phase, I'd like to see us look at adding some temporary employees to support these teachers. They just, they just can't, they can't, they can't watch these kids, and those middle and high school kids, I don't care, you know, they're going to be hugging their girlfriends. I don't know what you guys, I know, and I've talked to some of these high schoolers, and they won't be back, but they like to socialize. And I just think that we need to put some additional support personnel in. So if we could consider that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think, five minutes again?
I-
Oh, F5, we're still hashing this thing out. Sure, Ms. Argarpur.
So we've talked a lot about different grades and stages and all that. What about our special education preschool? A lot of them do home, like, they do visits at other places. And I don't know if, I don't know what their job will look like in this particular instance. Do you have something to speak about? Yeah, I looked at my email, I found a question. It was great.
So again, it will be based on an IEP decision and team. Some families are not comfortable having people come into the home, and we recognize the unique challenges with preschool, and we will be, you know, working to meet the needs of all the families and the kids in that way. So we recognize that that's a concern.
F5?
F5.
No, no, no.
I didn't approve it.
We all agree to it.
It's my motion.
Oh, well, yeah, I guess.
I'm just, just go ahead. I mean, you're okay with it, just put it up on the screen, we'll read it line by line, word by word.
Okay.
Fix the spelling mistakes.
B's not going to make spelling mistakes.
No, I was, I was, yeah. Okay, it's up. So let's, for entertainment's sake, read it. And so the approval of the superintendent's proposed return to learning, return to work and health plans. Motion that, in order to reopen schools this fall, while protecting the health, safety, and well-being of students and staff, the Prince William County School Board, one, reopen schools for the 2021 school year on September 8, 2020, under a return to learning plan, with a 100% virtual learning model for the first quarter, which offers in-person services to special education students and other especially vulnerable student groups as feasible, transitioning to a 50% capacity in-person and distance learning model for the second quarter, while maintaining flexibility throughout to adapt to public health guidelines as needed. And two, to adopt the proposed return to work and health plans, modified as needed, to adapt to the return to learning plan and public health guidelines. And three, to authorize the superintendent to implement any additional mitigation measures as appropriate to accommodate those models. Can we, in, so the only thing I would add to this, just as I look at it, just really quick, not add, is to clarify, as Mr. Guilfoyle pointed out, we want to make sure everyone knows that student groups transitioning to a 50% capacity in-person distance learning model for the second quarter, there's a choice. Families have a choice. Transitioning to a choice where students may continue, you know, it's this distance learning thing again. Rita, I don't-
Dr. Latif-
I don't like the distance learning thing.
Dr. Latif, that's not the correct motion.
Oh. What am I reading it for, then?
That's not the correct language. I just sent you an email with the correct language.
Can you send that to B, so I can get that up there?
She got it.
Okay, sorry.
It's her turn to type it in, she just got it.
Ms. Goss, I have a problem with that distance learning thing. I mean, I have to tell you, if that distance learning thing is defined by the stuff that was given to us last week, it, you know, I, it's not good enough. I mean, I can't use that language. If you say to me and reassure me, well, Dr. Latif, the distance learning thing isn't going to look like what that said, I might be okay with it. But if you're referring to the distance learning in the second quarter that we're going to choose from, in a hybrid model, is this thing on Monday, and nothing else happening, that is synchronous, I can't get behind this motion again. Okay, we may have lost her. Dr. Walz, I mean, you understand our concerns on that?
I do.
Okay. So I think you can make the call on, I mean, if you want to change the language, or just reassure us and tells us, hey, Dr. Latif, you know, we're obviously going to try to make it-
Ms. Goss, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Goss is available, she was muted on my side.
Okay.
I think we have a new line.
Okay, 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 that's fine, that's fine. Okay, put it up. We'll read the language before Ms. Goss answers. Maybe that'll help us. And if that means just saying, we're going to, Mr. Stevens, can you put it up? Or Ms. B? Okay, good. Let's read it again. And the reason we're doing this is because this is a legal document, everyone. Motion that, in order to reopen schools this fall, while protecting the health, safety, and well-being of students and staff, and the Prince William County School Board, one, reopen schools for the 2021 school year on September 8, 2020, under a return to learning plan with 100% virtual learning model for the first quarter, which offers in-person services to special education students and other especially vulnerable student groups as feasible, transitioning to a 50% capacity in-person and distance learning model for the second quarter, while maintaining flexibility throughout to adapt to public health guidelines as needed, and to adopt proposed return to work health plans modified as needed to adapt to return to learning plan, it's the same one.
It's the wrong one. Can I read it, the correct one, to you?
Well, you need it up on the screen, Mary. We, I got three people, yeah, go ahead and read it.
Now, B has it. Take a short break, and I'll deal with it on the phone.
Okay, I need this up now, guys, because, okay, that's fine, that's fine. We'll take a five-minute break. Reopen schools for the 2021 school year on September 8, 2020, with 100% distance learning model for the first quarter. The Division will consider offering in-person services to special education students as determined appropriate by their IEP teams, and to the most vulnerable English-language learners and students with interrupted learning, as determined to be instructionally appropriate and feasible. The Division will transition to a 50% capacity in-person and distance learning model for the second quarter, if feasible, with the option for students to remain virtual while maintaining flexibility throughout to adapt to a public health guideline, to public health guidelines as needed, and to adopt to the proposed return to work and health plans modified as needed to adapt to the return to learning plan and the public health guidelines. And three, to authorize the superintendent to implement any additional mitigation measures as appropriate to accommodate these models. So everyone look at it. If there's any concerns, I know Mr. Wilk might have had a concern on the last version, but is this one better?
I don't know if I like the word "if feasible." What does that even mean?
Okay, so get on your microphone, and who would you ask that question to? Just direct that question, the question would be feasible to Dr. Walz. Is that a good word for us to use here, Dr. Walz?
Because one might argue, the in-person tonight was feasible. You know what I mean? Like, what are our metrics? What are our guidelines for-
Are you talking about, so we have feasible in there twice?
I'm talking about, yes, I'm sorry, the-
The distinct learning model for the second quarter, if feasible.
If feasible.
Right. I think what we're saying, or what, I didn't write the motion, but I think what you're trying to say as a board is, if feasible- Guidelines by, guided by health. Yes. So why do we just take that out, then? Because we kind of already said that, right? Hold on, hold on, don't take it- Or you could say, in accordance with guidance from the Governor's Office, CDC, or, and Virginia Department of Health, or VDOE, it should be VDOE and Virginia Department of Health.
I like that.
So, Mr. Wilk, tell us why that-
I think it leaves open to the interpretation that, again, we could be in this situation eight weeks down the road, and potentially in the same type of climate, and we would not use those guidelines to move forward and open school. So I just want some clarity on what specifically, who or what is going to help guide us to that, versus leaving it open to just feasible.
So Mr. Wilk, with something like, so what I interpret that as, you know, we don't want to be back here, sort of deciding like this, in Phase 3, where we're allowed to do it, should we do it, or should we not?
If we are in Phase 3, exactly.
So if we're, if, in, so, that's what he wants clarification on. Ms. Williams?
Okay, my only issue with that is, that's what we're doing right now. So-
Which is why we don't want to do it again.
But we, but we may have to do it again. We don't know what the future holds in terms of, maybe we're in a Phase 3 statewide, or maybe the state is in Phase 4, but Prince William County is not. So, I mean, that's what I'm saying, like, if feasible, like, maybe there's a hotspot.
That's why I said, we've already said it twice. You can take it out, because you said, while maintaining flexibility throughout to adapt to public health guidelines as needed. That is actually in extreme, ordinarily detail about what we want.
I'm fine with taking that out. I just, I want to make sure that-
So just say, the second quarter, get rid of if feasible, with the option for students remain virtual, while maintaining flexibility throughout to adapt. That sort of talks about what Wilk wanted, that we wanted to have the ability to reassure the public, we are going to look at this on a daily basis, every day. There is going to be a dashboard, or, I don't know if a dashboard, but like, you know, a dashboard thought process in our heads about, are we meeting the benchmarks to get this accomplished? And I think that says it very nicely. I don't think you need the word "if feasible."
I agree.
So let's take that out. Mary, can we take out if feasible?
I was muted by the organizer, probably for good reason.
Okay.
Yes, the if feasible was put in there in contemplation of, I think, the discussion earlier, particularly by Mr. Wilk, about wanting to look at this again before you move to Phase 2, or, excuse me, to the second quarter.
So they put it in for you, Mr. Wilk?
I don't think it-
Well, I mean, what, my issue, you bring this up, but seriously, like, what if we hit the second quarter, and we legitimately have to have a discussion as to whether or not it's possible?
So we've already said that in the thing, with the flexibility. It's in there. Put it up, put the motion back up, please.
If you, it reads, the Division will transition to a 50% incapac, capacity in-person and distance learning model for the second quarter, with the option, if you take out if feasible, with the option for students to remain virtual while maintaining flexibility throughout to adapt to public-
Yeah. That addresses every sort of scenario that can happen.
Yes.
Good, bad, up, down, worsening of the environment that we're in, bettering of the environment that we're in.
It just says that we're going to do it while maintaining flexibility. It doesn't talk about whether it's possible or not. It just says that we're going to do it and be flexible. It does not say, it does not let, it does not provide any room for anything. We could be, at the end of the first quarter, we could be anywhere, for all we know, I don't even want to say it, God forbid it happens, something bad. But I'm just saying, it doesn't say it twice. It just says that we're going to do it and be flexible. It doesn't speak to the possibility that anything else could happen, and we could not do it. It says, we are going to do it, and be flexible about it.
But that's where, if that's the case, then, the flexibility or the feasibility should be guided by the principles of the VDOE, the VDH, or stuff like that. I want-
Then change it, but language is important.
Yeah, so you can make it simple. You can either get rid of if feasible, and that solves a problem, or you take the maintain- You can either get rid of if feasible and that solves a problem, or you take the maintaining flexibility based on, you know, what Justin Wilk is saying, what CDC guidelines are. I don't know. Ms. Wall?
Could we?
I was just going to say, what, I don't know if this solves the problem, it might not, but what if we say the Division will evaluate the feasibility of a transition to something like that?
I think that, I think that's...
Dr. Walz?
I think that's pretty good, because the one thing we don't want to do is promise something in the absence of data, how many teachers we have available, and, you know, any number of things. Mr., I thought Mr. Iman wanted to weigh in on this, and he rarely does, but...
That's true.
So I'm going to go back to my original reason for supporting the original motion to start on September 8. We are currently in an environment where the guidelines allow for us to go in at a 50% model while, if we can maintain it. It has nothing to do with anything else. And the issue is, you know, the feasibility is, you know, you know, we need, yeah, we need, the issue should be not, because you're, we're not putting a health metric on here, right? So we're currently allowed to be in, we don't have to do anything more, other than guarantee we can comply with providing the safety. Ms. Wall?
Then maybe we don't use feasibility, but we use something like evaluate the desirability or evaluate the, something, other word, of a, do you see what I'm saying? Because if it's not necessarily feasibility, it's our comfortability or our desire to do it.
Say first. I mean, all right, then do it.
See what I'm saying?
Mr. Iman has...
You can solve it by just saying second quarter if in Phase 3. Mr. Iman?
Yeah, just very quickly, I want to go back to what Dr. Walz was saying. Yes, it's important around the health situation, VDOE guidance, but also, if you recall earlier in the discussion, it was explained that we don't have the data back from staff yet as to how many teachers are going to be available to us in each situation. So that's really where the flexibility or the feasibility also comes in. We have to know the availability of the staff we have to provide the level of service. So the language has to be flexible enough for us to be able to adjust on that basis.
Yeah, it could change.
Put the motion back up, please.
Maybe we should put, with the goal, the Division will transition to a 50% incapacity in learning, and could we put with the goal of? Because that's what we're all trying to do, is to get students back in, but we want to make sure that we can meet all of the needs to do that. So could we add before the Division, with the goal of the Division transitioning to a 50%? Because that's sort of what your caveat is. Like, everybody wants kids to go back in school, and that is our goal. I mean, that's what we said, we're okay with doing 100% virtual.
I mean, you know...
Because we want kids to go back in.
Yeah, I think if you just get rid of if feasible, you're not changing anything. You know, you're reducing redundancy and taking out vague, sort of vagueness. And I, unless someone can...
That's my fear, the vagueness.
Yeah, the vagueness has to be gone. This can't be a document that is based on vagueness, you know, like, a lack in clarity. And we have said, and we've said, maintaining flexibility throughout, we're going to do this regularly, but feasibility, I mean...
But what if, that's what I'm saying, like, what if at the end of the first quarter, we run into a problem where we don't have enough staff, but we have students?
Yeah, I mean, we'll cross that bridge when it comes. I mean, that's part of why we're going to continue to have meetings and getting updates, but we don't need to put that in there, because that just creates, I think, as Mr. Wilk points out, just vagueness is not necessary. Mary?
I just feel the vagueness leads the interpretation in a sense that we may not want to go back to school. And I understand that there's, with the feasibility and what Mr. Iman was saying, but I...
That's what I was saying, with the goal of, adding that before the Division, because the goal is to go back to school.
I like the phrase, the goal of. You mentioned, is anybody opposed to that? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. McGowan. Ms. Jesse saying somehow throw in the word the goal of instead of if feasible, I don't know.
Following up on Ms. Jesse's suggestion, how about I can change that sentence to, it is the goal of the Division to transition to a 50% capacity in-person and distance learning model for the second quarter, with option for students to remain virtual, while maintaining flexibility to adopt public guidelines. The flexibility language is intended to allow, accommodate changes in the public health guidelines, which may affect, which may affect that second phase.
And that, I like that, but then I'm like, why do we still need that if feasible? Because the flexibility...
No, she took it out. She was struck, she took it out.
Take out.
So let's, can you, okay, put it up again, B? Or whoever's in charge of putting it up. So, read it again, Mary, while we're looking at it, it's easier.
Second, that sentence that starts with the Division should read, it is the goal of the Division to transition to a 50% capacity in-person and distant learning model for the second quarter, with the option for students to remain virtual.
Right.
While maintaining flexibility throughout to adapt to public health guidelines as needed.
B, if you can fix that? Okay, while B is fixing that, is there any other language in here anyone else has a problem with? Ms. Wall?
One suggestion. We could consider putting at the end, the last sentence, 3, to authorize the superintendent under the direction of the school board to implement any additional mitigation measures. In that way, we, the proposals are brought to us, and then we approve them.
Okay, actually, Dr. Walz, just explain what this whole sentence means and what you want by this.
Well, the problem with that is if something changes where the mitigation or some kind of modification has to be done, we would have to come back to you every time.
We may have to meet in order to...
And give us an example of, to reassure Ms. Wall, why you having that authority without having to come back to us? Like, what do you mean by that? Like, just why does that last sentence in there?
Could I address that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, oh yeah, Ms. McGowan, that's fine.
I suggested this language. Today was a perfect example. Today, we just found out today that we're going to get the final Department of the Ocean guidelines, right? And, but we're not going to get them until maybe the 28th or the 29th. They may require, you know, immediate compliance in certain aspects, ordering certain supplies, making certain modifications. I put it in there so that the administration would have the flexibility to immediately begin implementing those mitigation measures in order to bring us into compliance with the law. That was totally my suggestion.
And so, for example, if that triggered having to update the health plan to the state, we would simply be able to carry those things out utilizing, using Mary's example.
So put the motion back up. Would that also include something like if we're in the middle of Quarter 2 and we have students that are live and the governor says we're going into Phase 2 and you shut schools down? That's basically part of it too, right?
Yes.
Right, I mean, I think that's what, so the superintendent would have the authority to do that without us having to call a meeting to do it. Is that a good example?
Yes.
Mary? Dr. Walz?
To closing schools down?
Yeah.
I, yes.
I mean, basically, that's kind of, that's an extreme example of what we're saying in this, to authorize a superintendent to implement additional, because that's a mitigation measure to shut school down.
Yes.
Right.
Just like we did before.
Right. We didn't have a school and board meeting for that. Is there any issues with that, Ms. Wall? Yes?
Yeah, that's good, that's fine.
Okay.
What about changing goal to objective? Anybody care, or just, it is the objective of the Division?
Yeah, I like that better.
It seems more, it seems more like...
I'm going to work, submit this thing to death. Goal means that you're reaching for, you're going to try to reach this, but all, you're talking about something that you cannot control. You cannot control this virus. It may not be in, it could be like, right now, 22193 is one of the hotspots. It could be a bigger hotspot. There are other hotspots. It could be Prince William. It could be somebody in a school become very ill, or somebody, it's just all kinds of things that you cannot control in other situations. And I think having the goals, and I think it's going to have to be a little bit vague, because they're things that we don't control. I think what Mary said, we don't control everything.
Ms. Wall?
I think goal and objective are very similar. Objective just sounds, I mean, it's another way of saying a goal, but it's more of...
They're different. You write an objective under a goal. You set a goal, and then you write an objective to meet the goal.
Yeah, I think, that's fine. To me, they're mean the same, but there's a distinction in legal use or...
Yeah, I think that Ms. Wall and Mr. Wilk's general comments on this language and mine are that we are intending to do this, and there should be no ambiguity that the board's goal, objective, desire is to get students in the classroom, and this is how we would like to do it. So I think that's the spirit of what we're trying to, at least, that those two, and I, if I could speak for them, is I think that's what we're trying to do, that there should be no ambiguity in our desire to get students back in. Ms. Williams?
Before we vote, I just want to know, and I'm asking a question so that the public is also included in the conversation, should we include in the motion language about continuing to evaluate at a later date, or is that something we should just state to the public that we plan to meet again to be provided with updates prior to, I don't know, the end of the first quarter? I mean, I know it seems like a no-brainer, but...
Sure, yeah, we're having meetings regularly.
I know, but I just, it's one of those questions that we have not addressed or said, and before we vote on this, I just want to be very clear, the public understands that we plan to come back, because somebody will read this or understand, see this and be like, oh, so they're only going to come back at the end of the first quarter and make a decision. I just want to make sure that we speak to that.
So I, protecting health, safety, and well-being of students and staff in the first line, that's sort of our guiding principle throughout. So in order to reopen schools, so I would read that statement as that is going to continue that, something that we're going to be doing.
I just want to make sure it's clear to everybody else outside of...
Are you asking us to change the language, or no?
No.
Okay.
I'm just making sure that the public knows, well, it's not stated in there.
Right, right.
So, and we have not really said that, and so I don't want to leave the impression that we vote on this, and then someone could interpret it to say that, oh, they're not going to come back till the end of the first quarter to discuss what happened, you know. I just want to make sure that we state it. That's basically what I'm saying.
No, and I think, you know, members have said that we're going to try to just watch this on a daily basis and reevaluate constantly.
Yeah, we're all getting tired, but it's, you know, one of those things.
B, did you put, did we fix it, the goal thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let's read it one final time, and then we'll take a vote. Any objection to that? Okay. Motion for 12...
Dr. Latif?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I've been raising my hand, I don't think that you can see me.
Oh, we can't see you.
Oh, we can't see you. Yeah, just jump in.
Okay. One is, I can't see the motion, so it's hard for me to follow along with the wordsmith thing.
Jason, why, can she see the motion? Can you get that up on her screen somehow? In the chat box or something? Why can't she see the motion?
None of us can see it.
I know you're not in Board Docs, but there's a chat box on the webinar. Isn't there something on there? You can stick it in there? Copy and paste it there? Can you email it to them? You're going to get it by email, each of you, so you can take a look at it there.
I'm trying to pull it up on Board Docs, too.
So they don't have Board Docs? They may not have Board Docs up at home, Jason, so...
It's not popping up. It was popping up, but it's not popping up.
Oh, okay, so can you, so can we, B, can you put it up as a pop-up now for the vote?
I don't really see it.
Yeah, that's what they mean. That's, okay, we'll do that. You'll see it then, Adele, okay.
Come on. My second question is, what is it, what do you guys mean by consider? And I can't remember what exactly it says, because I don't have the motion, but it says, what, it's something about...
Go ahead, put it up on Board Docs, B. I don't see it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this, what I have on the screen right now is not the modified version.
No, I don't know what you have up there. Get that off.
From Board Docs, when I try to use it.
That's not it.
I don't see it. I've hit refresh.
I hit refresh, it's not coming, there's something wrong with Board Docs. Because if you type it up in that, in that screen where you can display it, it should also mirror it in Board Docs. There it goes.
We do have captions on this side, but...
Yep, on the online votes, it's there.
Being read, it's probably hard to be...
In Board Docs, but you can't...
Yeah, the problem is, Jason, you need to put up that most recent version in the captions so that people can see it on the webinar if they're looking there, but we're trying to get it up. Ms. Jesse, and Ms. Jackson, and Ms. Rawson, you guys all have Board Docs up?
Yes.
Okay, we're waiting, we're working to get that motion up so you can see it.
Okay, so my question is, the Division will consider offering in-person services to the special education students as determined by appropriate IEP teams. What does that, what does that mean in, to consider?
Dr. Walz, what would you, how would you define the idea of considering?
That as a result of the IEP team meeting and the IEP team goals. If they determine that it, that, you know, a child needs to be present in school. It's just like in the Phase 2. In the Phase 2 document, you could bring students in, but you had to have the agreement of the IEP team.
So you wouldn't, we wouldn't really know, it could be a huge population. I'm just still worried about the overcrowding of the self-contained classrooms.
Ms. Eibner, can you come up and answer that question? And let's, let's just, it's a question about the overcrowding of special education rooms, please.
I'm also concerned about my, yeah, overcrowding as well. To give a very general idea, we have 12,000 IEPs in the Division. We have 12,000 IEPs in the Division. I wouldn't anticipate that all of those learners would need to come in. We have about 2,600 students who are in self-contained programs or in a special class setting that would probably be the most vulnerable learners that would have difficulty learning in a virtual platform. I believe the intent of the board is not to provide general, or, you know, special education instruction in the school setting for all special education students, just those who could not benefit from a virtual platform, and that's a very big distinction. So while we have 12,000 IEPs, we have about 2,600 students in specialized classrooms. We will have additional students who are serviced, not necessarily solely in that classroom, but may have higher level of service on their IEPs. So I can't give an exact number, but that will gauge it for you. I think there may be, the L numbers I can't speak to, but that would be a significant difference in population.
Okay, I don't see the vote up. Is the vote up?
It's a little dialogue box. If you hit F5, it should pop up and rejoin the meeting.
You guys have it?
I have it.
Oh. Okay, I see it, okay. All right, seeing that there's no further discussion, I would ask the board to...
Adele, can you...
Please vote. Oh, Adele, did you have any further questions? I'm sorry.
Does she see it?
Do you see the vote? Oh, read, yeah, read it. You saw it, right?
Are we coming back again to see if this is feasible? Because I still, like, my self-contained class had 14 kids in a shoebox. Like, it's, I don't, I'm still, you would have to bring in more staff to make this work, and so...
We'll make this work because they're, they have all the other classrooms available, so if we have to get a second teacher in a different room, we'll do that.
Okay, so that's still part of the discussion, like, and how to make, would we come back as a board to discuss this?
No, you don't have to come back as a board. We'll just make sure that works. We're not going to, we're not going to put too many kids in a room, a tiny room, like you said, we will not be doing that.
So...
Remember, the rest of the kids aren't there.
You can't put that many kids in a room because you've had, you would have your mitigation problems with that anyway. We're not just talking about special education, we're talking about the health, health concerns. So I think that's something that we can discuss down the road.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
So, maybe it will be helpful if I, if I throw this in there, depending, however this vote comes out, we will still need to come back and get an update from Dr. Walz about what it is, it's going to look like for reopening schools and what that means. Once they've figured out what teachers are available, what I, what IEP states, once they have more data, I think it would be fair to request that we come back and get updated so that not only the board knows, but the public knows as well in a reasonable timeframe. So, I don't know, sometime prior to September 8th. Is that not fair, Dr. Walz?
Yes, I, in order to have the most done, based on the most data, I would suggest Wednesday, August 26th.
It's fine, we can work out that, hash that out. But, but, Dr. Walz, you've reassured us as board members, we're going to get embargoed up, regular updates on progress. Progress notes, the School Division's website will be constantly updated with progress towards all goals.
Absolutely.
September 8th, virtual goal, special education goal, whatever. We're going to be regularly updating everyone.
Just like we did when we started those updates.
And anybody can ask questions throughout this whole next month? Ms. Jackson? Anything else?
No, that helps to know that we'll be, like, there'll be continual dialogues.
Okay, great. Okay, please vote.
I don't know, did you vote? It'll show up in a corner.
Ms. Ralston, how do you vote? Yes, Ms. Ralston, can you just unmute and just say it so I can hear it? Can you unmute, Ms. Ralston?
She's saying yes.
You're saying yes? How about a thumbs up? I'll take that. And Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Ms. Jackson, how do you vote? She voted. Okay, you did it online. Great. Do you have, so with Ms. Ralston and Ms. Jessie? So, that, that, that's an eight yes unanimous vote by the Prince William County School Board to pass a reopening plan. Thank you, guys, for, for all of this. I think, looking to see that there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.